Testing 123. This will be the January 14, 2015 City Council meeting for a board interview workshop, followed by a board handbook workshop.
Good evening. I'd like to call to order a workshop meeting of the City Council of Satellite Beach, January 14, 2015, approximately 6:50, and this is for interviews for board -- interview for board applicant. Neil, how you doing, buddy? Just please come up here, take a seat, and --
Speaking to any one of the two.
Any of the three you want to have. I know we all know you, but we have to -- we go through this. You have to. So if you would, tell us a little bit about yourself, and, you know, we'll ask you some questions maybe.
Okay. Neil Johnson, I don't know if I have to read in where I live, but I live at 308 Lee Avenue. Have lived there since 1992, have been a resident of Rovard County in and around Satellite Beach since the late 60s when my dad came here with the Air Force. Thank you for kind of being flexible with the schedule. I know that I was supposed to be here for a couple of other meetings, and it just interfered with some other stuff that I do. I've been in the banking and finance business in Rovard County since 1979, have managed bank branches, managed areas for banks. I currently am a mortgage loan officer for EverBank over in Melbourne. And I just really, really feel like that one of the things that we have to do is to support our communities, be involved in our communities. And when I saw the opportunity to work with one of the city boards, I thought that was something that I should do, because I feel like I've taken a lot from the city over the years, being a resident and taking advantage of the services. I have served in the past as the chairman of the Economic Development Commission, have served as chair of other boards, have served on a lot of other boards, and I just feel like it's important that we support our communities and give back to our communities with our time and our effort. So that's kind of the reason that I'm here.
Great. Thank you. Questions for Neil? Would I start?
Neil, I don't know you, so I'm glad to meet you. You have selected the Comprehensive Planning Advisory Board. Why did you pick that board?
Well, I think two reasons. One of which was when they meet is convenient for me. It works for my schedule, because it's on a Monday night. Other than that, I think it kind of helps us to be forward-thinking as we start to look, you know, what we want to do, you know, how we want the city to be, what we want to lead to our kids and our grandkids, which I have one that lives in Texas, but, you know, may come back here someday. But I think it's just, it's important that we plan ahead, and those of us that can should be involved in that process.
Are you familiar with our comprehensive plan?
I have not reviewed it extensively, no.
What, if any, tie-in do you see with the work that you do on EDC?
Well, I think with the EDC, you know, as we continue to work to recruit and retain the jobs that we bring here, the high-tech, those type of individuals are going to be looking to places like our city to live. So we need to continue to make sure that it is an appropriate place, it's a good place for them to live, that the, you know, that the schools are good, the services, police, fire, et cetera, are good for folks that want to relocate to our area, specifically in Satellite Beach area.
Well, I'm really pleased that you've applied for this board.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions?
I have never met you before, Neil.
Actually, that is not --
We have.
We have.
We have met. I don't know you well, but I'm glad that you're stepping up, and like Lorraine, I think it's great that you're giving back to the community. And I think it's going to be a great board for you, and I think you'll bring a lot to the table. This is our board that looks into the future. And there's one member here in the audience of that board, John Fergus, and he's been on that board for a long time, and the --
He's not on there now.
He's not on there now. You're not on that board?
You're doing okay, Dominic.
Anyway, thank you very much.
My pleasure. I'm with you.
I've known Neil since high school. I go way back. Neil, you'd be an excellent addition to any board we want to put you on, and thank you for applying, and I give him my best compliment, I guess I could say. I think he'd be a good addition, so please consider him highly. And thank you, Neil.
Thanks, Mark.
Neil, I would just say, I know you're forward-thinking and looking at that. Is there anything that jumps out at you right now that you think we should be looking at, or something we're missing, or maybe we even planned for it, but you think we should keep on going after?
Neil, I think I would reserve judgment on that until I've had a chance to really review the comprehensive plan more to see exactly what it looks like we're trying to do, but, you know, just making sure that we continue to offer the high-quality services that we have, that I've enjoyed as a resident of the city. Just making sure that we continue to do that. As demographics change, as the economy changes, we need to make sure that our plan changes along with that.
All right. Thank you. I agree. Great.
Thank you. Neil, I've known you forever. Thanks. Appreciate it very, very much for being here. I think Courtney has.
How did you hear about the board opening?
Facebook.
Okay. Thank you.
Set up. I'll leave.
That was not a setup. I promise.
Oh, boy. When do we vote for this guy? Neil, thanks. Appreciate you stepping forward. I know you have a busy schedule. The process works this way. At our next council meeting, as agenda, we will vote.
Which is next week.
Which is next week. So.
Next Wednesday?
Next Wednesday.
And you don't have to be.
I mean, but I think I can, yeah.
And it won't be the first agenda item. It would be.
It's a good agenda, though. It'll be a good agenda for Conference of Planning Board member to hear. A very good agenda, actually.
Yeah, that one is definitely going to be something you'd want to sit in on.
What time does it start?
Seven o'clock.
Okay.
Any other questions for now? Neil, thanks very, very much. Appreciate you stepping up.
Nice to see you. Nice to meet the ones that I haven't met.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Break for a couple. I mean, like to call to order a workshop meeting of the City Council of Satellite Beach, January 14, 2015, approximately 7:00 PM. We're here to discuss and make recommendations on board committee handbook. Lorraine?
Before we get into these boards, I want to bring to your attention that our council policies and procedures have a whole section called "City Boards and Committees," and all it does is repeat stuff that's in the handbook. So at our next meeting, our next regular council meeting, I'm going to ask that this council policies and procedures be put back on the agenda, so that we can delete this portion. It serves no function, and we should not be covering the same material in more than one place. And in addition to that, believe it or not, I made a mistake.
Is that on record?
And on the council attire, I left out, when I reworded it, I left out the part about the mayor's asking for something different. So I've amended that again, and that will be on the policies and procedures next time.
Can I ask someone the policies and procedures? Will the policies and procedures make a note that you go to the handbook?
I don't even think it's necessary.
You don't think it's necessary at all? Procedures?
I mean, we can if that's what you want.
I was just, I'm more asking that question from a legal standpoint. Do we need to? If it's not in council's policies and procedures, do we lose any control over it?
No. No.
Can we bring this back on the fourth? Is that okay?
Okay.
Is that okay?
Yeah, just don't forget.
Yeah.
Okay. And getting into these boards, the pension plan boards are something else. I spent a lot of time on them, trying to figure out what to do. And first of all, in the name of the board itself, I put at the top that both Florida statutes and the city code discuss pension plans. Yet, when whoever named these boards, named them, it became a retirement plan. The correct name should be pension plan. And as usual, I'm advocating that we use consistent terminology. The Florida statute specifically allows city council to change the term of office up to four years, and it allows virtually nothing else to be changed about the material that's in this statute about these pension boards. So right now, we have the term of office for these two boards is two years, and so I'm proposing that we make it consistent with all the other boards and change it to three years, since we, the statute does give us the authority to do that. And I said that there is at least one version of bylaws for retirement plans, boards of trustees, and that one set of bylaws covers both the general employees and the firefighters and police. It contains provisions that conflict with Florida statute and the city code, and there is another document with the same title that simply repeats some of the city code provisions. It serves no useful purpose. So I'm proposing that all documents relating to these boards, other than those in this handbook, need to be rescinded. Now, the material that I'm showing you here is found also in the city code and Florida statute. However, I put it here just in kind of a synopsis form to be consistent with all the other boards, and these are kind of the questions that you ask about a board, kind of down and dirty, and so I thought it was good to just give that information here in synopsis form, what you're looking at right here. And that makes this, these two boards, these two pension boards, consistent with all the other boards. And then at the bottom of the write-up for the firefighter, and I also don't understand why our board, our retirement board, is called Police Officers and Firefighters. The statute talks about firefighters and police. They don't talk about police officers. And so I'm putting, see the following for complete information about this board, and that will be Florida statute chapters 175 relating to firefighters, and 185 relating to police, and also city code chapter 46, article 3. And what we're going to have to do in the handbook, we're going to have to, this is the code and the statute relating to the firefighters and police pension boards. This material should be part of the handbook, right under the cover page for this particular pension board. And then I put this caveat also, that these state and city laws shall take precedence over any conflicting provisions of this handbook. We were trying to make provisions consistent throughout all the boards, but Florida statute has some other things that conflict, and so that's why I put that there and made sure that for these boards, the two pension boards, the statute prevails.
Great question on that, just for more, like it is, you want it to be part of the handbook, or do we want to denote that it's available, City Hall on it?
I just don't see how you can expect people to serve properly on a board if we don't give them the information that they need to work with.
Okay. That's my, I'm just, I'm going to play devil's just for a few things to do.
Yeah, I think it's part of the handbook.
Okay.
I kind of like the one-stop shop. Everything's in one place. You hand them one book, they shouldn't have to look anywhere else. It should be in one, one place.
Yeah.
And that would make it a lot easier.
Yeah.
Not to interrupt the tranthaw, but did you see where Florida League of Cities put out today about the pension, where they're trying to change it?
I just showed Lorraine.
Yeah, okay.
I have, I have one, one question. When it talks about the members, we state two legal residents of the city, one firefighter, one police officer, and then it says one member elected by the other four board members, then ministerially appointed by council. But we're not stipulating that that should be a city resident. Should we not stipulate that, or does Florida statute spell that out?
This language is, this is out of the code and the statute, and so I didn't mess with it.
Well, and see, to me, that means that we could have somebody who's on this board that doesn't live in our city, has no vested right in our city, and to me, I think that's why.
You have employees that don't live here that do have a vested right for retirement board.
Yeah, but that's because they're an employee. But for us to have someone on this board who has no affiliation at all with our city.
Oh, I see. For the city appointees, you're talking about.
No, I'm talking about the one member elected by the other four board members.
Oh, I see.
There's nothing there that stipulates that that person is a member of our community. And to me, I have a problem with that. I don't know what Florida statutes say, but why would we want somebody from Merritt Island or, I mean, because if the other members of this board are bringing this person on, how do we know it's not a union person from a different city? I mean, to me, I think we need to specify who that person is and where they're supposed to be from. Not who, but they should be here.
I have a question on that for a second, just playing devil, throwing things out. You might have a person who's very intelligent on pension plans, and he was picked by these people because of his expertise on this board, on this matter, and they've asked him to be part of it. He might not live here, might not have a vested interest, but it's coming from people who do have a vested interest that are bringing this person to this board. So is that the reasoning behind this? Because you could get expertise on the board from members that it does affect and are part of our city. So that's, you know, just throwing that out.
And I'm not doubting that. Go ahead.
And that was going to be my, that was going to be my comment as well, is this learned is an opportunity to bring in somebody from the outside that has an expertise. So you kind of said everything I said we're going to say, Frank, so that's, I'm done.
Ben Arce, something, Ed.
No, I mean, the history of what I have seen is they have been residents for the three positions that are not in the pension plan itself. You have the election for the people that are in the plan for the firefighter and police officer position, but typically I have seen that the other three have been residents of the city.
I've been, I've been the liaison to that board for a number of years, and those people were all city residents, those respective slots that were other than a firefighter or a police officer. And I recognize exactly what you're saying, and there's a lot of credence in that. But what happens if the person isn't that person? We've got nothing that prevents them from going there, because if that board chooses that person, we as council have no right at all to decline that membership. And that's where the problem is. If we have people there that have an ulterior motive and can get that person in, then we're at a loss to be able to do anything.
Well, I'm not just, again, throwing it out from the devil's end here, is, that can be true with a citizen or a non-citizen, alternative motives.
I, um.
Can we, can we, I'll ask you this, can we change that if that came right out of the state?
It came out of the code. I see it here in the code, and it can be changed. A fifth member elected by the other four members of the board. Here's what I would propose, if the council is interested in having this person be a city resident. Let me go through the Florida statute language again and see what they, whether or not they, whether or not that statutory language would allow this. And if it will, then I'll make the change that third bullet will say one legal resident elected by the other four, if that's what the council wants.
I just want to make sure we don't box.
I think we ought to let Jim weigh in on your.
I just wanted to point out one issue was, is that the city was involved in litigation about membership on this pension board once before, and the way the courts have construed it is very strictly, as far as what we can and can't do, which is more like what Lorraine was talking about at the beginning. There's very little that we can really change from the statute. So if the statute says that, then I would be reluctant to be, to recommend that we do something different than what's actually verbatim on the statute. And if I remember right, it had to do with the ministerial part of the appointment, is that we voted, the council actually voted for somebody to be on there, and I can go back and see if I can find my stuff.
If it's statute, and if it's in the statute, then if we can't do anything, that's great. But if it's not that way, I would like to see it a different way, I think. You know, if we're locked in on statute, then we're stuck.
And again, if we're not, you know, I'm just going to play it again, is, is the reason for this to get the best minds on that board, on the pension board?
Correct.
And not everybody maybe that has that mind lives in our city.
Right.
Not saying that they wouldn't, but, and again, the only reason I'm saying this, not to put ourselves in a little box here, is it's being elected by, A, people that have a vested right, or they already live in the city, by the rest of the items here.
Can I just ask one question, and it's just based on the very first one, it says two legal residents of the city. Could they be firefighters or policemen?
Technically, yes.
So, that's, that's what I was just asking. I mean, that can be interpreted that way, so they could also, so you could have one firefighter, one police officer, but the two residents, if they're residents and they just happen to be firefighters.
They could be put on.
They could be put on also. Okay. I just, I just was trying to read into exactly what it, what it's asking.
I think first, we need to make sure what we can and can't do by the change of this.
I agree. I think we need, whatever the state statute says, it may, if it gives us some latitude, then we'll go with the latitude.
I don't, I don't see that requirement in the statute with what I'm reading here, but Florida statute's got these things on our three and comprehends, so I'd like to be able to take a look at this, and if Jim would take a look at it also. I don't see on first reading here a prohibition on that. The, the language that's quoted here came out of the code, and we can certainly change what's in the code, if it's not prohibited by the statute. So.
Then I, this is one thing that we need to look at before we get to the final.
Well, can I have some guidance from council? If, if we can change it, do you, do we want to change it to make it a resident? Can we just have a?
I would be in favor of that.
Okay, and I would be.
Is there any history of why it's written this way? Has anybody, I mean, has one member appointed by them? Does anybody have any knowledge going back? I just.
I think it, I think it came out of that litigation, and that's, but I can't be positive.
Okay. So do you have records on that litigation?
Yes, I think I do. And I'd have to go back and look at my file.
Okay. Will you let me know what you find?
Yes.
Okay. All right.
My, and I'm just worried about boxing it in to leave someone else that really can help, because that's an incredibly important board that could cost the city a lot of money somewhere down the line. So I just want to make sure why it's the way it is, and what's legal or not legal.
And my feeling is, you probably already know that I'm not interested in non-residents serving on boards, but it's just.
Just to point out, on the retirement or the pension plan for general employees, it's three legal residents and two employee members. So in that case, they're all resident or members of the plan.
What do you want, the general?
I, I would just think, a couple thoughts came to mind. I mean, obviously, you've sat on as the liaison to the board. Have you ever known an instance where they, they felt like they wanted to get somebody from the outside to help with any process they were doing? I mean, did it ever come to mind?
They have an authority that advises them, SIFIN, SIFIN is the name, that advises the board. And they also, right now, are in a situation where the Florida League of Cities is actually doing all the administrative work for the board, and they're extremely knowledgeable and well-versed and informative on any questions that could be asked by the board, and generally are very helpful at offering suggestions. And I understand exactly where Frank is coming from. I just don't know if opening it up to people outside of our community who have no stake in.
Right. Well, like I said, have you ever seen a case, or can you think of any time where someone may have said, "We need to get somebody else," or "I need to go ask somebody else," or "We need to go outside of," okay, that's why I'm just looking for some history to base that on. The other part about that is, I just figure, you know, if you are a member and you need some of that expertise, there's no reason why one individual member just couldn't go ask somebody and say, "Hey, you've been involved with this before, you've been in pension, this is an issue, what is your opinion on that?" They don't necessarily have to be on the board and have to be there to do that, but.
They also have, now, you have to realize, they are their own entity.
Right.
There is training that is available to all of these people, and many of them have gone to these trainings, and it comes out of, it comes out of the pension trust fund. I mean, it comes out of the retirement pension for them. So they can, they, there are opportunities available to them to go to Florida League of Cities.
And ask.
Does these training events, so they're, they have avenues open to them to learn.
Let me ask you a question, then. If there is, we're putting people on the board that's very important. Should we mandate that they go to want some of these trainings if you're going to put them on the board? I mean, it's obviously a board that you need to have that knowledge to do it. So if it's available, obviously, they make it available because of the importance of the board. So as you said, it's there if they want to go. Well, I hope we appoint people that would want to go to get an audible. But if they don't go, does it hurt us? And do we eliminate that by making them have the training? Obviously, we have to have training ethics coming up here this year, sunshine stuff. Is that something we want to include here? Just throwing it out.
I think it's a good idea, because this is a very important board.
Well, yeah. Well, I think it goes back to the next, the question we just had is, by Florida state statute, can we mandate that? Can you say that you, can we mandate that you must have that training? Again, I'm just saying, if it allows you to do that, then I would say, yeah, I think they should have the training, but I think you need to.
You can offer it to them. I don't think you can mandate it.
You can't mandate training even if we're paying?
We're not paying.
Well, the pension fund is paying.
Right.
Yeah. I mean, if you, if you pay for it, you can offer it to them, but, yeah, I think you're limiting your board members, because you're basically saying you've got to leave for a couple days off your job. You have to take leave, you know, I mean, they might not want, or can do that.
You know, on this board, what's interesting is, I think we need to know before we've learned anything what we can and can't do by the Florida statute. I think we need Jim to give us a rundown of what things can and can't do so we could finish this. If not, we could come up with ideas, like I just kind of brought that up just for, you know, thought. But if we can't do it, then it's no use to spend any time.
Well, at the least, at the least, we can say that members are encouraged, strongly encouraged to attend training.
Yep, I'd be okay with that.
And see the city manager about that?
How did you guys want to pay for that?
What?
I said, how did you all want to pay for that? But we'll, we'll figure it out.
It's on Dominic.
Take it out of my salary.
And shall I add, see the city manager about the training? Then for the rest of the stuff that's here, term of office, are you in agreement, three years? The financial disclosure, they are required to do that, and there's a very thorough explanation of when you're supposed to file in the general portion of the handbook, and so I've referred back to that. The staff, according to the secretary, is the Florida League of Cities, and their regular meetings are held at this particular time. And then I added what you had all I'd wanted, which is, or other time and or place approved by the city manager. And this board must meet at least quarterly. So are you all in agreement with changing the name to Pension Plan Board of Trustees for Firefighters and Police, and killing these other bylaws and other documents that are floating out there that?
Yes. Yes, I am.
I'm all yellow.
Lorraine, if you can switch, the general employees generally meet at 2:00.
I can't, I can't hear you.
The general employees generally meet at 2:00, and the police and fire at approximately 2:30 or thereafter the end of the general employee meeting. So do you just note that?
Do you talk into the mic?
The, the general employees generally meet at 2:00. Police and fire meet at 2:30. And then they do a joint meeting.
No, thereafter. If the general employee goes a little over.
Well, here's what happens in the meetings. The general employees meet at 2:00. They do whatever business they have to do, and then the police and fire do whatever business they have to do, and then the Florida League of Cities does the report. And then the Florida League of Cities does the report for both boards together so that they don't have to do that twice and waste time. So, there's, part of the meetings are separate and then part of the meeting is done as a combined report.
Okay, so then I have this backwards. Is that what you're saying? So, if the general employees go at 2:00 and then the firefighters and police go after that, okay.
They both handle their administrative stuff.
Yeah.
On the agenda separately. And then the report is done jointly.
Okay.
At the end.
Okay, so are we all right, then, with this pension board? Okay, then going to the pension board, Pension Plan Board of Trustees for the general employees. You can take a look at what I have there. And at the bottom of that, of this write-up, it will say, "See City Code, Chapter 46, Article 2, for complete information about this board." And that City Code, Chapter 46, Article 2, shall take precedence over any conflicting provisions of this handbook. I didn't see anything in the Florida statutes about general employees.
There's none.
There are none. Basically, what we have are local plans. We don't have, I think they call them leaked law plans or statute plans or something like that. We have local plans because of how long we've had them in place.
Okay.
So, would we include Chapter 46, Article 2, in this book, the same way that we would put them?
Yes. And are you in agreement to change the title to Pension Plan and change it to two, three years?
Yeah, yes.
Lorraine, what I would like to do, what I would like to do is open it up for public comment after each section. That way, people have any questions. This time, open it up for a public comment on the retirement section of the handbook. Here, another. Go back, Lorraine.
Okay, the Community Redevelopment Agency Advisory, and it would become board since committees only refer to ad hoc panels. And I said that this board has a charter which repeats part of the City Code, conflicts with other parts, is woefully outdated, and now serves no useful purpose. All documents relating to this board, other than those in this handbook, need to be rescinded.
Can I ask a question real quick? I'm sorry. On the name of the board, joining from committee to board, is it an ad hoc board? Because it has a life to this board, isn't it?
Anything that lasts 25 years is really kind of a permanent.
Okay.
An ad hoc is normally, it lasts, you know, so many weeks or months.
Just a question.
Okay, then, I struck the state law Florida statute chapter because I was not able to find anything in there dealing with an advisory board. And that chapter deals with the Community Redevelopment Agency. And, but, the advisory board is governed by Chapter 31, Sections 31-5 and 31-8. So, if you'll look at Board Established there. I put the termination date in there. And the duties of this board, one of them, the second bullet, says, "The board will provide the CRA board with quarterly written reports on the status of projects undertaken by this board." And I highlighted quarterly because I thought we needed to talk about that. Then, the number of members is nine primary and two alternates. And I put in here the language out of the City Code, dealing with the special eligibility requirement where non-residents are allowed to be on this board as long as they are, quote, "engaged in business" in the redevelopment district. The term of office is three years, no financial disclosure. The city clerk's office or other staff approved by the city manager is the support staff. And the regular meetings are the third Thursday of each month at 7:00 PM in the council chamber or other time and/or place approved by the city manager. And then, if you'll notice, the next page is all stricken. And that's the part of the current City Code that deals with this advisory board. And I have said here that everything contained in the City Code regarding this advisory board is contained in this handbook. So, this portion of the code should be rescinded because it's no longer needed. And I can assure you that everything that's in there has been transferred to the handbook.
So, does this statement right here go away?
Which statement?
This statement right here.
On the cost reference?
If we're scratching all of this stuff.
Yes.
Does that go away?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
This statement right here goes away.
At reference.
If we scratch all that stuff.
Can I just ask one question since Mr. Checkter is here too, board? This is a nine-member primary and two alternates. There's been very few meetings I've been at that the alternates have not participated in, if I'm not mistaken. Is nine too big? Is seven and two a better number to handle?
It's a challenge.
The number is a challenge, having nine? Again, I'm the liaison to the board and, you know, we're always trying to get people on it. It takes a bigger number to have a quorum. So, just throwing that out. We have a couple of members here, so...
How would?
Since we have such a small number here, can we just open it and let them have input when you hear it?
I'd like to see five permanent and two alternates. Sometimes it'd be easier to get...
David Omler, CRA board member. I was tired of being on crack. I think we should have five permanent members and two alternates. Be easier to get a quorum. And I think the meetings would go a lot quicker and get more accomplished. Let's just...
I saw that number and I know it's quite large and so I... Sorry.
You're Checkter, chairman of the invited committee, it used to be. I'll come back there when you comment at the end. Yeah, nine is a challenge. Although we've been doing fairly well on tennis, I only had some operations, surgery, so she couldn't come for a couple of times. But other than that, we've been using them. It'd be easier with seven, just to be honest with you. I don't think it needs to be five. David certainly can do that. Seven would be easier to deal with and work with on the board and the panel and doing that. We can do it. We've been doing it. But it would be easier with seven.
What do you think of five?
I would like to think people have enough interest in this thing to, at least they have. Now, as it cranks down, there's going to be less interest in it, I suspect, as we get toward the end of the thing, when everything's just playing out and there's really no decisions to make, be less interested in being on it. Right now, there's still interest in those people who are there to be there.
How would you look at downsizing two people? I mean, how would we determine? Would you make a recommend, would your board make a recommendation?
I think you have openings on that board.
I do.
Yeah.
We do?
You don't have any alternate openings?
No, it's the advisory advisory committee.
Oh, okay.
I thought so, too.
Okay.
You can attrition this.
Yeah.
By the dates that the next person comes up to be appointed.
Yeah.
We've got some way to do it. We've done it before. We've blown up and we've gone down. There must be a way to do it easily, so that shouldn't be, the determinant factor is how many you want.
Well, I guess my question would be, if we have people that are transitioning out through time and there are valuable people on your committee that you don't want to lose, that's my concern, is we want to make sure that the people that you feel need to be there are going to be there. And if their time is coming up, are we doing ourselves a disservice doing it that way?
My thing was just by the sheer number of nine, you know?
I agree. I mean, if you want to downsize it, I'm fine.
But I want to make sure we get...
If you want to make it seven, we've got a way to do it.
We could just have a seven, nine-member board and downsize it to seven as people who no longer want to serve leave the board. So, that way, if people want to continue to serve, they can. Just write it in that manner.
Okay.
Thank you. Didn't mean to make it, but I just, nine's a lot.
I agree.
I agree, too.
So, what are we going to say?
However, Courtney just said where we take it. Attrition if it works.
Yeah, I need the number. You want to say seven and two?
I think so.
I think so, too.
Myself.
That's fine. I'm going with that.
Okay. Are you all okay with the rest of the stuff there for that board?
Yes.
And let's talk about one of the duties being to provide the CRA board with quarterly written reports on the status of projects undertaken by this board. Has that ever been done?
No. And the reason why is because everything they decide come to you at the next meeting.
Yeah, we get minutes.
Right.
So, you want to just strike that bullet?
Yeah.
Yes. There's no reason to have it. I'm okay with getting rid of it. I mean, if we're not doing it...
We vote on it anyway.
Right.
I mean, it's our final, it's our final decision. So, it comes to us. We're getting the information.
As an agenda item.
Right, as an agenda item. And we get the minutes and we know where their thought process was in it. And it usually helps starts from us, too, from our being on the board.
Right.
Or...
In this, in accordance with City Code, Section 2-96, I found that little nugget. And I'm sure that nobody else knows it exists. But it applied to three or four different boards requiring coordination with this CRA advisory board. And so, I put it there so that those boards that are affected by that requirement know that they have it.
And that will be a part of this also?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay, so are we okay with that?
Yes.
Yes. You want to open it up?
Any further comment on community development now board, advisory board? Can I hear none?
On the page...
The board, it was the audience.
I'm sorry.
I was at the audience.
David Checkter, citizen, whatever. Why don't you call it, it is an agency, it's a Community Redevelopment Agency, right? Why do you have the board?
Because this is the advisory.
Yeah, I'm sorry. You're going to change us to be a board rather than a committee. You want to call it CRA board, why not just CRA, the agency rather than the board? Why is the board on your title? Question.
Did I?
That might clear it up a little because we're both may call it a board here.
That's how I was just...
It can get a little confusing.
Right.
So, to me, maybe you chopped that one.
Yeah.
Consider it. Consider it.
So, you would just read, "Community Redevelopment Agency Advisory."
Well, no, yours is, stop right there.
Your honor.
Community Redevelopment Agency is what you guys are. Where's the board? Except, it's just, there are two Bs going on here if you put us back to being a board.
We have the same name on both of us.
It's close. It might be more, less confusing, let's put it that way. If you're the CRA and we're the CRAB, we become the crab.
So, we're the CRA and you're the crab.
Yes, yeah. Let's consider that. I don't know if it's possible.
Otherwise, both of you are crabs. One's a crab and one's a crab.
Yeah, that was... Yes, get this in. The other one is really just a little net and talked about serving until your successor's been appointed. And she said they can't be stopped and quitting. I don't disagree with that. The intent of that kind of language is, is if you have a three-year term, I'm appointed on the 21st of January, the next year I come around and not appointed to the 28th, am I a member or am I not a member? So, that kind of language, in terms of boards and committees and stuff, is usually put in there for that purpose. Let's say served to replacement there. And it's possible that because of timing, if somebody gets really nitty with you, you understand what I'm saying? If my appointment expires on the 21st of the month, of January, just for the sake of argument, you don't meet to the 28th to make that appointment. What happens between the 21st and 28th? Am I a member or not?
No.
And that's what that language is, you're on the board until your successor's appointed to cover that kind of contingency. You can decide whether you want to do that or not, but that's why it's there.
Okay. But if we like that language, if we go into the general portion and the bylaw...
Yeah, that's my point. It's not just board, but that's, just from a parliamentary standpoint, that's what that's intended for. Whether you want to get that nitty or not, it's okay.
Yeah, I like that because there can be other scenarios. And the scenario is sometimes we cancel a meeting. And it's going to be at least a month before that and they might have a board meeting in there and...
Right.
That's reasonable to do that.
That'll go just in the general board section of the...
Yeah.
Yeah, it sounds good to me. That's a comment from that standpoint. The other one, you are aware that we did have a policy and procedures manual for our board that we put in last year and the year before. And you've seen that and you've taken care of everything in there, right?
Let me see that.
You're in front of, I give it to you, I'm sorry.
No, I think it's a good idea to have general stuff like you're doing. And what we did was just mirrored what you guys do mostly so that we had in a piece of paper in front of us the way we were going to operate. And so, it talks about speaking. Most of that stuff is covered in your thing, I think it is. And we just wanted to make sure everybody understood what it meant to us and our committee. So, if anybody can make, there was no question about if, what order I did things in, and the chair, excuse me, the chair did things in.
Well...
But that's, you can look at that. If there's something important works for you, that's fine.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you.
And this, on that same page that everything is stricken through, at the bottom in paragraph C, what I've highlighted here is not in the rest of the handbook. The advisory committee is authorized to make such other rules as appropriate. And this is exactly what we're trying to get away from. So, that is not in the handbook. So, then the next is the Comprehensive Planning Board. There exist at least two different sets of bylaws for CPAB. They conflict with each other and with this handbook, and they contain provisions which are ignored today, if not always. They serve no useful purpose. Again, all documents relating to CPAB other than those mentioned in this handbook need to be rescinded. All useful provisions of City Code, Chapter 2, Article 3, Division 2, are contained in the handbook, so we should rescind this portion of the code. And if you look on the next page, what you see there in that box is what exists now in the City Code. And all of the things that are highlighted, that are stricken through and highlighted, are not repeated in the rest of the handbook. The board shall adopt its own bylaws now. And then on reports, a yearly status report from the CPAB shall be submitted to the city council by July 1 of each year. Intermediate reports may be submitted at any time. I don't know, you know, what purpose that says. And I did put an asterisk there, said that one version of the bylaws requires the yearly status report to consist at the least of a compilation of minutes for all meetings the board held during the preceding year to be submitted by the staff recording secretary to the city council by July 1 of each year. That serves no purpose because we already get the minutes. So, that, Section 2-95 needs to go away. And then in the last section, it says, "Each board in the volunteer Florida Department should designate their representative." This is that portion on Section 2-96 that talks about the various boards that have to coordinate with the CPAB. And there, there's just, there's no need to appoint a particular person to coordinate with CPAB. All boards have chairs and the city has staff, so... All boards have chairs and the city has staff, so they can probably figure out who to contact. So then we have the establishment of the board and its duties. And the chapter 163 Florida statutes is actually called the Community Planning Act, and not that long name that everybody seems to think it's called. The number of members is six to nine primary members and two alternates. The CPAB bylaws say six to 12 primary members. And my question is, do we want to set a specific number rather than a range? And I would think so.
I'd say seven and two. It's similar to the last board we did, and.
I would decrease this. The CPAB, you have, how many members do you have now?
Nine or 10.
It's a difficult board to staff.
Getting.
And so is planning and zoning.
Yeah, and getting a quorum can be a challenge. We sit in here watching bodies come in to see if we've got enough. And there is history on that. When, back in the early days, in the 90s, we were writing the changes to the comp plan, all of it. And so when that seven-year year review came up, everybody got together, everybody took a part, and everybody was busy. But nowadays, the consultants are doing 90% of the work, and we've got a fair number of people sit around the desk and don't really participate. They're just there. And so it wouldn't hurt, I don't think, to.
Minister Johnson, since you sat on the board for such a long time, is five and two a good number?
If you get the right five.
Or seven and two. I mean, obviously you want to decrease it, we want to pick that number. You've had.
I would, well, I would think what you might want to do would be invite David Delighton, the chair, in and have a discussion with him, and when you, maybe actually inviting whenever.
John, give us your opinion. You're asking your opinion.
The problem, well, if you have five and two, then you mean, that means that you need at least three people there. That's kind of, I think, a little bit small.
So seven and two.
I think seven, because then you've got at least four.
You can require a larger quorum, though. You could do a five-member board with a four minimum quorum, or something of that nature.
Well, if you do, if you do that, then your odds become higher that you're going to get a couple, you know, it gets harder. So if it's one more than half type thing, and you've got two alternates, I would think down to seven is, let's put it this way, you could do that, see how it works, and if folks feel, you know, six months or a year down, that maybe that's still a little bit heavy, then just drop it again.
No, John, you don't understand. We're never coming back to the handbook.
Just to give you an idea, most cities, even the county, there's one planning and zoning board that does comp planning as well as zoning and everything else, and they have five members with two alternates.
I wouldn't, I wouldn't arch my back against five. I'm just saying, and, you know, I.
What do you think it should be?
Five. We have a really difficult time staffing our boards right now. When this, there's not a lot of controversy, people, you know, it's hard to get people to participate, and we have very little controversy right now in the city, and honestly, we had two people apply for the CPAB because we put out a plea on Facebook, and it was, help, we need members, you know. So I think you'll get a better participation when you have a smaller board that has a little bit more to do, and right now, we just don't have that happening, you know.
If we, if we did go to five and two, would we insert that quorum of at least four people?
You could do that. When you have a quorum of four, though, you have, you risk having a 2-2, which fails every motion. So if you have a really disagreeable issue and have four people there, that's the only, that's the only problem you run into, is if you get a 2-2, you're not going to get anything done.
So in your experience, Courtney, in other cities, it was five and two is more the norm?
Yes.
What's, what's really important is getting the right people, because that board isn't responding to a code violation or a change in the LDRs. This board's supposed to be out in the front, and you need people that are self-initiating.
Well, even, you know, changing land development regulations to be consistent with the comprehensive plan is still long-range planning, and right now, you have that in two separate boards, but, you know, and it's difficult to staff both of those boards. And because you have two different boards, they don't have a lot to do. So when you have canceled meetings and things like that, there's less of an interest in those boards.
So are you suggesting that we look at the possibility of combining these two boards?
I think when we, when we look at a charter review, you know, opportunity, when we should be looking at that coming up soon, is getting a committee together, an ad hoc committee together to start a charter review. That might be something you want to explore, because most cities have that setup, and particularly, it, in my opinion, it helps because you have the same board doing your long-range planning that's implementing your current planning, so they have that experience. They're looking at everything. And, you know, when you have something like the year come up, I've seen a lot of cities, they'll expand, they'll create an ad hoc committee of other members to look at that issue closely and guide the consultant, give them a group to work with. So those are some of the other things that you can do to enhance your participation. But for a particular issue, it's hard to have participation year-round if the board's not constantly working on something, you know.
I would be in favor of making it five.
Five and two.
And two alternates. Because we're requiring alternates to come, so that's seven people to be in a discussion, and that's a good size.
Especially a board like that that a lot of times doesn't have anything to do.
So then they shouldn't be meeting.
Well, but what I'm saying still, it's put people out for that night off their schedule because that meeting is coming up, so I think five and two, then.
I'm good with that.
Okay.
Thank you, John.
Okay, are you all right with everything else?
Yes.
In your bullets of duties, that 2-4, 2-4, the fifth one, coordinate its work, da-da-da-da-da-da. I don't know if we've ever done that. And I don't know why you would pick on the fire department and not police or public works or rec department. I'm not sure where that language came from.
Well, then what you could do is just strip fire and departments, because if you're going to, if comp plan's changing, it might affect the rec board in that particular spot or zone.
Would you insert city departments and replace a fire?
Other applicable city boards and staff.
Yeah, that's not the better.
I think that's the staff's responsibility to make sure that the applicable departments are aware, you know, your staff liaison to the board, if there's something that the board is doing, and it's really the staff liaison's responsibility to notify the other departments to be, to be there and participate.
And also, I believe there was some, I thought of a statutory requirement. We had, for a longest time, Pat Januski from the base was a titular member of the board, and I believe it may have been not that long ago that we were supposed to have somebody from the school board.
I think we have somebody just appointed from the school board. We do, we do have somebody that's been just appointed.
Yeah, so I guess your members, I think there may be some statutory.
But they're appointed to the planning and zoning board, not, yeah, PZAB, not this board. Because the school board's more interested in your zoning and your, you know, today, not your comp plan.
Well, except that one element, the educational element that is.
But that's been negotiated by all the cities and the.
I know, yeah.
Committee, so the city really has no real leeway in changing that.
Yeah.
Unless we, you know.
But my, my point was, and obviously I had no reason to worry about it, I thought there might be, I thought there was something that said at least for the Air Force, that was supposed to be somebody there, but maybe not.
It's on the PZAB, too.
I got the PZAB, so.
So.
I'll check into it, but I'm pretty sure that it's.
CPAB has the school board on the board roster. We have a Patrick Air Force Base liaison person. Currently, they have not provided us with the CPAB school board liaison, so.
Yeah.
They identified a PZAB lawyer.
Yeah, I don't think we've.
And they have difficulty trying to fill that.
Yeah, and it's been years since we had anybody from outside.
And that's, that's another point, you know, when you have two separate boards, that most cities have one, you know, the school board's used to pointing one liaison to the city, not two. So you're, we're going to always have that difficulty of getting those liaisons because the, you know, it's just not something that the school board or Patrick Air Force Base is used to having to do.
And really, if you look at Patrick Air Force Base, they've not taken part in a lot of stuff. They used to have people that came to the League of Cities meetings. There hasn't been a Air Force person at a League of Cities meeting in several years. So I, I think they're kind of disassociating themselves from a lot of that stuff that they used to do.
They've had a lot of reductions. We're seeing a lot of business in the staff. They just don't have time to do their job, let alone all the other stuff.
They do all this stuff, so why would we require them to be on a board? We should just take it off.
Well, let me ask, go back a second here on that. Wasn't that put on when we were acquiring the Patrick housing?
No. You've always had a, usually when you're next to the base.
For some reason, and I might be wrong here, you might be able to tell me, I thought we added that position from the base when we're doing the P&amp;Z and the stuff on the south housing.
You may have, I'm not sure.
I mean, I.
It sounds familiar. It's not there when I was there.
Yeah, and that's why I think something, I mean, I can't recall exactly where, but I was under the impression that was added because they wanted to be.
Involved.
Involved in what was being planned for that property, and any changes that might occur there. So I, that's where I think.
Until it's built, we probably should continue trying to keep them involved, yeah. We have one on PZ, on planning and zoning.
Again, that.
Patrick Air Force Base.
On CPAB or planning and zoning?
CPAB.
Okay.
It's a flying day.
There was something, I don't remember.
I don't think it's ever attended.
No, I mean, he was elected January 15th of last year. I don't know where we are. Where are we?
I think we were at the members.
Picking the numbers.
Yep. Picking the members, and then we began talking about the appointed from other agencies.
Did we, did we clarify that what John brought up about the fire department, we just insert the word staff?
Right.
Okay, so we've got that. We're all okay with that.
That's where we were.
That's where we were.
Uh-huh. So are we okay, then, with what I've suggested here?
I'm okay. You have to change that again. There's another change. The, there's two fire departments in there.
Yeah, we got it.
And I'd, what I would recommend is where it says the CPAB chair shall notify other board chairs, you may want to just say the CPAB chair shall work with staff to notify the other board chairs. That way, we're not putting it on the poor chair when it's really usually the staff that does that. Yeah, and the secretary, so.
That sounds good.
Okay. Is the rest of that okay?
Yep.
I'm good with it.
Okay.
I just wanted to make one comment real quick. When we are talking about amending the code, we would recommend leaving the section 2.91 established, because the state requires us to establish the LPA, and to do that, we would have to do that by ordinance. So we don't really need all the rest of the things in the code, but we do need to establish the LPA or local planning agency, I'm sorry, which is the CPAB by ordinance. So at some, in some section of our code, we need to do that.
Well, this is going to be adopted by ordinance.
Oh, we are adopting this by ordinance, okay. Okay. So when we amend this, we're going to have to go do it through ordinance?
Yes.
Okay.
And that ordinance would also rescind all of these things that have been moved to the handbook, which will be adopted by ordinance.
Okay.
Is that good?
Jimmy, good with that?
That's fine. Yeah, I mean, that was something I talked according, there was one other thing that I talked according about, is the statute actually says to develop a comprehensive plan and plan amendments.
Right, we want to add the word amend, and amendments?
Amendments right here on the second, the second bullet.
Okay, that's all we had for that.
Are we good on that?
Done.
Okay, we've been through all of the general information, we've been through each of the boards now. We have a number of forms, which I'm updating, that have been referenced in various parts in this handbook, and they will be in a, in a section for the forms. And there's one section on dual office holding that I need to find the material for that to use, and that's it.
Thank you. Fine. Yes.
We're going to be done next week?
Tomorrow.
We're going to be done next week?
Tomorrow.
Tomorrow? So what's your comfort zone here?
I don't want to set a time right now.
Okay.
I want, is Barbara back in action? Is she open?
We're leaving tomorrow.
Okay.
And we'll be back on Sunday.
Oh, okay. All right. So next, okay, so she would be able to read this over?
Yes.
Okay, I want another set of eyes to read this and catch any errors, and so I'll let you know as soon as I can set a realistic time on this. This is in January, this should be able to be finished for the second reading in February.
It's really pretty.
Right.
It's really pretty. It's very nice.
Okay.
Amber?
Any further business?
Yes, one thing just hit me, and maybe this is not the meeting to ask this, but I'll go ahead and ask it. Each year, the county sends us a financial disclosure form that, I just don't remember the one coming out recently that we, because I haven't gotten one.
You didn't do yours for 2014?
I haven't gotten one, not that I know of.
I don't think I did either.
No, I, you do them at the end, so we would get the form now to fill out.
In June, that's when you do them, isn't it?
You do them in June, not the end of the year in June.
Okay, thank you. That's all. I had a sense of panic of where was this form, so thank you. Okay, we're good.
Any other question first? Thank you, Lauren.
Okay, the next time that we do meet, it will be for all of us to take a look at the entire document, so please take the time to read it before the meetings, make sure you're comfortable with how it hangs together, and if you spot anything, you know, it's time to let me know.
Thank you for all your work.
We will do a work, another workshop.
Yeah.
Okay. Sounds great. Well, thank you very much. Any further discussion?
Good job.
Great job?
It is really nice.
Thank you, and remember, we have a regular meeting the 21st, and dress appropriate. Lip gloves? Thank you.
I forgot about pictures I had to come in.